Yeah. I mean, I don't call it a stand-up every year. I mean, you say that for 40 out of 60 complete hours.
Just need a rag.
Yes, I do. So I'm kind of working my way this way.
I figured so.
Is there, are we coming to get you, or are you driving home?
No, I, well, our son has, um, he had a basketball game and now an orchestra concert and they're at All City right now. And then we have another fa- a neighbor bringing home our son, so I am going to go to All City, leave my car and then we'll hop in with Tony and he'll drive us out to the door.
Ooh, okay.
So, I'll be good. Easy enough. And then I'll just get my car.
Because I don't think we're gonna get done much before he knew here. And because my buddies are meeting out at the Burma Saven store party.
Oh.
Down there on Russell Street. And Jim Baines, uh, they have Saven. And he's got an office out there, very well equipped for parties.
Because if we got done early.
Yeah, yeah. And, uh, he said that you guys would be welcome to come too for, he said the beers. Yeah, so depending upon what time, we could do that. Because I'm gonna, I'm gonna... Yeah, did you mention anything specific? He is, yeah. I was too. I think Kenny said that, that text message.
Oh, good.
Uh, Rolfing is at the same. But tonight, uh, it's really pretty information.
It's gonna be this one here.
Oh, I know it's...
He's got five or six things circled.
But I, when I looked at it, there's like a two and a half pages of items on the consent agenda.
There's questions, there's polling and what we need to do is just figure out who's gonna approve. First, we need to tell him all the way approved, second, I don't know, you know what I mean? I hate to sound like that, but...
Rolfing wants to go to the, uh, the basketball game because they're in, playing a sudden, as I see.
That's even sooner, yeah.
So, Michelle's got, doesn't have any skin in the game, so to speak.
That's right, they're always, where are you guys talking TIF? Is that where you were?
Just a little bit and stuff. Oh, no, there's some other committee on, um, city office needs and stuff, so...
Enjoy.
It's real. It is. Yeah, absolutely.
Because just like, like Mike and...
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it also works.
That was a big reason why I wasn't, we didn't have any time to make that public. We would've been ripped apart. You could do it.
Right, right. I just thought, oh, just to that.
Why didn't you present this two weeks ago? What was reading?
And it's been, yeah, it's, it's really, we never want this little bit walking through the doors and...
That was my, that was my thought, too.
Kettle.
Yeah.
I was like, whoa, but we can still do it upstairs.
Yeah, right. I think so, too. Especially, let's see how it comes in, you know, building that comes in on the like event center.
Well, but the only thing is you want to, and that's $600-ish thousand dollars. Because they usually come, each department comes with their... They, they, they own the property and direct line and you have to do the list or whatever. I don't, but I'm just saying, just throwing something out there, you know?
Yeah. I was thinking earlier during our informational meeting, it was like one year ago that I was sitting on most teams.
Mm-hmm, they're very separate.
Doesn't seem like it's been a year already.
I know, it's crazy. I still think I belong to them.
Oh, gosh, no kidding, no kidding.
There isn't, there is, there isn't anywhere you have to either have your car or a paper or you can rent a car or whatever. And my, my son just goes, yeah. No, Shipley's has a little, Shipley's himself has a little area, yeah, yeah. And that's about it. But they give them for the tenants, so... Yeah, 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 yeah. I think he's, he's not actually renting, is that how? It's some kind of deal, some kind of, yeah. Which is good, that was, that was in a good place for him to be, so. My parking got expensive, the unpaid tickets, kind of, behind, behind the car, which was wonderful.
Yeah.
Hey, shh, you wanted your attention to it. We're sitting. You're just, you're just mad you're being...
I, I tried to get him to... My date, my date and I have to car today, so...
I was just gonna say that. What a gentleman, what a gentleman.
Doesn't want to go now.
Go, Dean.
Doing great, thank you.
Dean.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm happy to be here, I appreciate that.
You're welcome anytime.
Oh, thank you very much. A lot of young, a lot of young people, I hope, it's nice. Agator, agator, agator. Yeah, it's, yeah, and Jeff says to tell you hello, too. Oh, yes, agator. I will do that.
I know. Nope.
Just say it, just say it. Good, good. Yeah, oh, yeah, he's doing a lot of, doing some solving for some things. And being a grandpa and just mentoring, he just Sunday school. We have two, we have two little ones and we have two more coming the end of this month, my daughter and my daughter-in-law are both expecting the end of March, so, yeah, so he helps me because I help them. One of them's in school, my daughter-in-law, so he helps me. All the time. So, but things are, are good.
Thank you.
I will, I will.
You gotta wait for my video. They gotta do that little video and then you could start after that. Yeah, they'll do it right, they should be doing it soon. Brad.
Good evening and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. This meeting of the Sioux Falls City Council will begin in a few moments. The city council meets on the first, second, and third Tuesday of each month at seven o'clock PM and serves as the city's policymaking and legislative body. Each meeting is governed by Robert's Rules of Order unless those guidelines conflict with city ordinance or charter. City council meetings offer an opportunity for citizens to speak directly to their elected representatives. Those in attendance are invited to address the council during the public input segment at the beginning of the agenda. At that time, any issue that is not subject to formal action later in the agenda can be addressed. Testimony that concerns a resolution or an ordinance's second reading is only allowed when those specific agenda items are being addressed by the council. When addressing the council, citizens should speak directly into the microphones at the podium and state their names for the record after being recognized by the chair. To accommodate and respect all viewpoints, citizen comments are limited by ordinance to no more than five minutes each. Comments should be respectful and focused on providing new information that will benefit the council's deliberative process. The chair reserves the right to limit the number of speakers. City council meetings are broadcast live on CityLink and online at www.soufals.org. Information regarding the city council, its committees, meetings, briefings, and members is available by visiting www.soufals.org/council or by calling the council office at 605-367-8085. Thank you for your interest in Sioux Falls City Government.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. It is Tuesday, March 3rd. We're certainly pleased to have everybody here. We'll start our meeting with a roll call of, uh, your city council.
Council members Rolfing?
Here.
Staggers?
Present.
Anderson?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Urbanback?
Here.
Jamison?
Here.
Karski?
Here.
Kylie?
Here.
Thank you, council, appreciate that. Uh, in Sioux Falls, we start our meetings with an invocation. We're blessed to have Becky, Becky Agator, who is with the Direct Line Prayer Center, and for those who are not aware, it's right across the street from, uh, City Hall. Becky, thanks for being here tonight. What we'd ask you to do is to stand for the invocation and then remain standing for our pledge of allegiance. Becky?
Father, I welcome you here tonight to lead this time by your Holy Spirit. Have your way. Thank you for each person on the city council who is willing to commit time and give their expertise to help govern our city. May you bless and prosper each one for their willingness to serve in this way. I pray from Psalm 15. May our council members walk in a way that is blameless and do what is righteous, speak the truth from their heart and have no slander on their tongue, may they do their neighbor no wrong and cast no slur on their fellow man, that they would despise a vile man but honor those who fear the Lord, that they would keep their oath even when it hurts, lend their money without usury and would not accept a bribe against the innocent. Your word says that those who do these things will never be shaken. May there be humility and submission in our leadership and in our people of this city. And I pray from Psalm 25. Let integrity and uprightness preserve our city officials and those in leadership as you instruct them in the way they should choose as decisions are made. Give all those in authority the wisdom to wait when needed, for none who wait on you will be ashamed. For you lead the humble in justice and teach them your way of wisdom. We ask your spirit to establish truthfulness, honesty, and faithfulness. I pray any decisions made during these meetings would be made in honor and support of family unity for the welfare and health of father, fathers, mothers, children, married couples, and single adults. I pray your law would be established over this city and the citizens would submit to the law. We lift the poor of this city to you. Help us all to know how best to love them and build them up, to rid us of apathy or indifference, to gain eyes of compassion, to truly see them and to empower them to see themselves as valuable and productive. I pray for your love to be poured out over this city where there is contention, separation, racism, violence. We ask that you would bring peace over our community, supernatural love between the races, mercy and compassion to overrule hatred. Father, we pray for deliverance from bondage of addictions of any kind. We ask for moral purity and values as well as a sense of shame over prevailing evils. We pray Sioux Falls would be marked by generosity and sacrificial giving, servant hood and selfless concern. We ask for contentment in our lifestyles and a release from being driven by busyness to chase after elusive wealth or power. And lastly, Father, I pray for the person who is hurting tonight, who is in the wilderness right now and is losing hope for the future. Father, may they experience the love of Jesus that can heal them emotionally, financially, physically, spiritually, mentally. We invite you to come into our greatest needs to reveal the hope that lies in you alone. The Lord will accomplish what concerns Sioux Falls, the plans he purpose long ago. For your loving kindness, oh Lord, is everlasting. Do not forsake the work of your hands. We pray in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the Bible of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. I do have two proclamations I'd like to read on behalf of the people of Sioux Falls. Don Norquist, would you please come forward, Don? Welcome. Thank you, Don. Whereas colorectal cancer is the third most commonly diagnosed cancer and the second most common cause of cancer deaths for men and women in the United States. Whereas every three minutes someone is diagnosed with colorectal cancer and every 10 minutes someone dies from colorectal cancer. Whereas a vast majority of colon cancer deaths can be prevented through proper screening and early detection. Only 39% of colorectal cancer patients have their cancers detected at an early stage. Whereas the survival rate of individuals who have early-stage colorectal cancer is 90%, but is only 10% when diagnosed after a spread to other organs. Whereas if the majority of people in the United States age 50 or older were screened regularly for colorectal cancer, the death rate from this disease could plummet by up to 70%. Whereas observing Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month during the month of March provides a special opportunity to offer education on the importance of early detection and screening. Now, therefore, I am Mike Huther, Mayor of the city of Sioux Falls, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2015 as Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month in Sioux Falls and encourage all citizens to be screened as colorectal cancer is preventable, treatable, and beatable in most cases. Don, thank you for being here tonight. And Melissa Townsend, please. Melissa, welcome. And who else do you have with you?
Sarah Wright.
Sarah, welcome as well. The proclamation reads, whereas on March 22nd, 1972, President Richard Nixon signed into a law, a measure that amended the Older Americans Acts of 1965 and established a national nutrition program for seniors 60 years and older. Whereas the Meals on Wheels Association of America established the National March for Meals Campaign in March 2002 to recognize the historic month, the importance of Older Americans Act senior nutrition programs, and raise awareness about senior hunger in America. Whereas the 2015 observance of the National March for Meals Campaign provides an opportunity to support senior nutrition programs that deliver vital and critical services by donating, volunteering, and raising awareness about senior hunger. Whereas the Senior Nutrition Programs Through Active Generations in the Sioux Empire area have served our communities admir- our communities admirably for 44 years. Whereas volunteer drivers for Meals on Wheels programs in the Sioux Empire area are the backbone of the program. And they not only deliver nutritious meals to homebound seniors and individuals with disabilities, but also carry concern and attention to their welfare. Whereas the Senior Nutrition Program Through Active Generations in Sioux Falls provides nutritious meals to seniors throughout the Sioux Empire area and helps them avoid premature or unnecessary institutionalization. Whereas the Senior Nutrition Program Through Active Generations in the Sioux Empire provides a powerful socialization opportunity for many seniors to help combat loneliness and isolation. Whereas the Senior Nutrition Program Through Active Generations in the Sioux Empire deserves recognition for the contributions that they have made and will continue to make to local communities. Now, therefore, I am Mike Huther, Mayor of the city of Sioux Falls, do hereby proclaim March 2015 as March for Meals Month. I urge every citizen to take time this month to honor our senior nutrition program, the seniors they serve, and the volunteers who care for them. Our recognition and involvement in the National 2015 March for Meals Campaign can enrich our entire community and help end senior hunger in America. So, no senior goes hungry. Thank you both for being here tonight. Council will now move to our consent agenda. Any motions to tonight's consent agenda?
Move for approval, Anderson.
Counselor Anderson Jr. has made a motion to approve our consent agenda, seconded by Counselor Karski. Counselor?
Yes, I just have one item to pull from the consent calendar. Washington Pavilion, uh, roof replacement, $78,000.
Counselor, thank you, appreciate that. Uh, we will pull that agenda and discuss that later. Any other discussion, council? A roll call vote, please.
Council members Rolfing?
Yes.
Staggers?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Urbanback?
Yes.
Jamison?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Kylie?
That has passed eight to zero. Thank you. Our regular agenda, council, any changes, motions to that?
Move to approve, Urbanback.
Second, Anderson.
Thank you both for that. Uh, any further discussion? A roll call vote, please.
Council members Rolfing?
Yes.
Staggers?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Urbanback?
Yes.
Jamison?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
That has passed eight to zero. Welcome to tonight's meeting. Uh, this is an opportunity for you to engage the council. Uh, if you'd like to just come forward, we'd ask you to just to keep your comments to five minutes or less and introduce yourself to the people of our town. Would anybody want to address the council? Well, thank you very much for being here. We appreciate that. We'll now move to item 26.
Item 26 is a new 2015 retail wine license for Envy Nails and Spa LLC, Envy Nails and Spa, to be operated at 4521 East 26th Street, CUP not required. Item 26...
Thank you. We should, uh, counselor, I apologize. That was my fault. Counselor, uh, Staggers did want to pull one item from the agenda, from the consent agenda.
Yes.
Was Washington Pavilion building roof replacement for $78,000. Counselor, my apologies.
Yeah, that's okay. Is there anybody from the Washington Pavilion here tonight? Okay, I didn't receive any phone calls the last few days, but the reason I, I pulled that item is because the Washington Pavilion is approximately 20 years old and during this 20-year period, we've had a number of roof, um, repairs. Uh, we had the Kirby Theater, we spent quite a bit of money on that, and also some others, and I was wondering how much we have spent in the last 20 years or so on this, and what is this all about?
Counselor, what I can do is certainly follow up, uh, on this and have someone contact you via email or, or phone call if you'd like. Uh, I, I don't have that answer tonight, I apologize.
Yeah, whether it's a roof replacement or is it an agreement for engineering services, it, it's, it's rather unclear and, uh, yeah.
Very good.
I was just very interested in finding out.
Thank you, counselor.
The money we've spent on the roof.
Counselor Buck?
I would just read from the actual agenda item. It says it is an agreement for engineering services for $78,000. I would move approval on this item.
I'll second it. Then a motion to approve this item. A roll call vote, please.
Council members Rolfing?
Yes.
Staggers?
No.
Anderson?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Urbanback?
Yes.
Jamison?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
That has passed seven to one. Thank you. Item 26, Jamie?
Item 26, uh, I've read, uh, item 27, Special One-Day Malt Beverage and Special One-Day Wine Licenses for Catering America Incorporated to be operated at Vance Thompson Vision 3101 West 57th Street for the Vance Thompson Eyeball on March 13th, 2015. 28 is Special One-Day Wine License.
Thank you. Item twenty-six. Jamie?
Item twenty-six, I've read. Item twenty-seven, special one-day malt beverage and special one-day wine licenses for Catering America Incorporated to be operated at Vance Thompson Vision, thirty-one oh-one West Fifty-Seven Street, for the Vance Thompson Eyeball on March thirteenth, twenty fifteen. Twenty-eight is special one-day wine license for Senior Citizen Services Incorporated to be operated at Active Generations, twenty-three hundred West Forty-Sixth Street, for a Canvas and Cocktails Art Class on March twenty-fourth, twenty fifteen. Item twenty-nine is a special one-day wine license for Senior Citizen Services Incorporated to be operated at Active Generations, twenty-three hundred West Forty-Sixth Street, for a Festival of Tables event on March twenty-sixth, twenty fifteen. Item thirty is a special one-day malt beverage and one-day wine licenses for Augustana College to be operated at the Elmwood Center, two thousand and one South Summit Avenue, for a fundraiser auction on April tenth, twenty fifteen. Item thirty-one is a special one-day malt beverage and special one-day wine licenses for Sotoma Butterfly House and Marine Cove, forty-three twenty South Oxbow Avenue, for a fundraiser on April seventeenth, twenty fifteen. Item thirty-two is a special one-day wine license for Senior Citizen Services Incorporated to be operated at Active Generations, twenty-three hundred West Forty-Sixth Street, for the Gourmet Guys fundraiser on April nineteenth, twenty fifteen. Item thirty-three is a special one-day malt beverage license for Sculpture Walk Incorporated to be operated at Eighth and Railroad Center, four oh-one East Eighth Street, for a fundraiser reception on May first, twenty fifteen. Item thirty-four is a special one-day malt beverage and special one-day wine licenses for Catering America Incorporated to be operated at the State Theater, three sixteen South Phillips Avenue, for poet events on May twelfth and nineteenth, and June second and nine, twenty fifteen, pending final inspection per fire.
Jamie?
Good evening. Jamie Palmer with Licensing. Item twenty-six is a new request for a license at a nail salon and spa. They would like to have that license to be able to offer complimentary wine to their guests, getting services in their salon. Items twenty-seven through thirty-four are all special one-day requests, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel?
Move for approval, Anderson.
Second, Rolfing.
Then a motion to approve these items has been seconded. No discussion, a rook of vote, please.
Councilmembers Rolfing?
Yes.
Staggers?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Urbanback?
Yes.
Jamison?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
That has passed eight to zero. Item thirty-five?
Item thirty-five is a second reading, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the 2013 Shape Places zoning ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls.
Jason Bieber at Planning and Building Services. This is an amendment to provide some corrections and edits, so the Shape Places zoning ordinance can be implemented correctly. We went through a lot of these amendments in quite detail at the February tenth informational meeting, so I will just kind of quickly go over some of the highlights. First, we're looking at reorganizing the bulk regulations for roughly seven forms. We are looking at modifying the full-service restaurant spacing requirement within the RE six form, which is predominantly used in the downtown planned unit development, and that will make it more consistent with on-sale and off-sale alcohol. Third, we're looking at adding the RE five form, which is retail greater than seventy-five thousand square feet, and the MD three form, which is apartment residential high-density forms, to the pedestrian-oriented Planned Unit Development zoning district. Next, we're looking at editing the buffer yard requirement to allow screen fences as an option instead of the required berms. And then finally, we're looking at modifying the screening of dumpsters and outdoor storage section of the ordinance by adding the words "from view of the public right-of-way." And the reason for this is to make it more consistent with the current zoning enforcement that we do right now.
Jason, thank you. Folks, this is the second reading. Did anybody want to engage the council on this topic? Welcome.
Hi, Greg Knightzert, Sioux Falls. I support all of these proposals, but there's one that I wanted to talk about, and that would be the dumpster proposal. That's been, I guess, maybe the most contentious among citizens, and I think there's a lot of misunderstanding. I think the big reason, obviously, was there was a presentation a few months ago where somebody showed a lot of examples of the cities being out of compliance. But the truth has to be first and foremost, so I'd like to say that, I can say with a hundred percent confidence, that this change has nothing to do with the city getting out of anything. And I'll tell you why. I've been on the Board of Adjustment for four years. We hear appeals and requests from people who want an exception of the zoning ordinance. And during those four years, we've heard a lot of appeals and people asking for variances from this very thing, screening of dumpsters. The way that it's been applied in those four years, and I know previous to that as well, is exactly this. You are required to screen it from the right-of-way. That's it. That's the way it was in the old ordinance. That's the way it's been done the last four years. Nothing has changed. This language will not change anything. The only thing it's going to do is clarify it, so everybody is clear about the rules. If the dumpsters between two buildings and you can't see it from a right-of-way, whether it's on city property or private property, you don't have to screen it, which makes total sense. It's not hurting anybody. As far as the dumpsters in the park, as long as they're not visible from the right-of-way, they don't have to be screened. Now, as a policy, you could change that, or the mayor, I'm sure, could probably change that, and I believe he may be doing that. And if that's happening, that's to his credit. But all of them just have to be screened from the right-of-way. So if it's deep in a park, it does not have to be screened. Now, I could see because a park is a sensitive use, you may want to do that, so you could consider that. A couple of years ago, I actually presented this to the planning department, and I actually presented it, I think, May of last year as well, with a bunch of other fixes. And I actually had this in here virtually word-for-word. And it was for the very reason that I wanted to. Anytime that we can remove confusion and make the rules clear for everybody, so everybody knows what the ground rules are, crystal clear, then that's what we should do. So all this is doing is making the rules clear for everybody. It's not changing anything. It's not getting the city out of anything. Everybody has the same obligations they did before. So this one is a no-brainer, and I just think there was a lot of confusion, and there was just a perception out there that this was some way in which for the city to get out of something, and it's just not true. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Did anybody else want to engage the council? Counsel?
Move for approval, Anderson.
Second, Erickson.
Then a motion to approve item thirty-five. It has been seconded. Any discussion? Roke vote, please.
Councilmembers Rolfing?
Yes.
Staggers?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Urbanback?
Yes.
Jamison?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Thank you. That has passed eight to zero. Item thirty-six?
Item thirty-six is a second reading, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property at the southwest corner of North Career Avenue and North Research Drive, from the C-two Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District to the CN Conservation District, petition number twenty-ninety-four, twenty fourteen, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval.
The applicant for this request is Doug Brockhouse. The owner is Marilyn Bergerson. It is roughly point four-three acres in size, and the purpose of this rezoning is to utilize this parcel for some onsite detention.
Jason, thank you. Again, folks, second reading. Did anybody want to discuss this with the council? Counselors?
Move for approval, Anderson.
Second, Rolfing.
Then a motion to approve this item has been seconded. A rook of vote, please.
Councilmembers Rolfing?
Yes.
Staggers?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Urbanback?
Yes.
Jamison?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
That has passed eight to zero. Thank you. Item thirty-eight?
Item thirty-eight is a second reading, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property at the southwest corner of North Career Avenue and North Research Drive, from the C-two Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District to the DTPUD Downtown Planned Unit Development District, petition number twenty-one forty-five, twenty fifteen, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval.
The owner and applicant of this request is Jeffrey Hazard. It is roughly one point three-three acres, and they're looking at doing a similar request. The only difference is there's an existing building on this parcel, and they're looking at rehabbing that and then doing the retail and live-work units within the building.
Jason, thank you. Did anybody want to discuss this item with the council? Counselors?
Move for approval, Anderson.
Second, Rolfing.
Counselor Anderson Jr., thank you. Counselor Rolfing, thank you. A rook of vote, please.
Councilmember Rolfing?
Yes.
Staggers?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Urbanback?
Yes.
Jamison?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
That has passed eight to zero. Thank you. Item thirty-nine?
Item thirty-nine is a second reading, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property at twelve twenty-four and twelve twenty-six East Rice Street, from the RD-one Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District to the C-two Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District, petition number twenty-one sixty-three, twenty fifteen, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval.
The applicant here is Eric Wildson. The owner is Kadir Sadat. It's roughly point two-five acres. The purpose of this is to tear down the existing house on the right lot and then the existing garage on the left one, and then keep and rehab the existing house on the left lot and change it for retail use, and then construct a proposed parking lot along with that existing building.
Jason, thank you. Folks, again, second reading. Anybody want to engage the council? Counselors?
Move to approve, Karski.
Second, Kylie.
Counselor Karski, thank you. Counselor Kylie, thank you as well. A rook of vote, please.
Councilmembers Rolfing?
Yes.
Staggers?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Urbanback?
Yes.
Jamison?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
That has passed eight to zero. Thank you. Item forty?
Item forty is a second reading, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property east of South Cliff Avenue and north and south of East Seventy-seventh Street, from the AG Agricultural District to the RA-three Apartment Residential High-Density S-two Institutional Campus Planned Unit Development, CN Conservation District and C-two Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District, petition number twenty-sixty-four, twenty-one sixty-four, twenty fifteen, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval.
The applicant is Eric Wildson. The owner-
Jason, Counselor Staggers, did you want to stay for this one?
Well, I was going to remove myself in just a moment. Yes, I'm not going to be voting on this.
Would you want to recuse yourself now?
It doesn't make any difference.
Yes, it does.
I-
Would you want to, you sure, I just encourage you to do it now.
Well, I'm not going to be voting on it. I'd be just sitting here, not saying anything at all.
Counselor Staggers, the purpose of recusing yourself would be so you wouldn't influence the vote of any of the other counselors, but that's-
I don't think I'd be influencing anybody's vote on this.
Let him go.
Jason?
The applicant is Eric Wildson. The owner of this is the University of Sioux Falls. It's roughly forty-seven point three acres. The purpose of this is to construct a commercial, residential, and institutional development with a commercial on the west side of the proposed forty-seven acres adjacent to Cliff Avenue, an institutional use in the northern center portion of the lot, and then some high-density residential in the south-central and southeast portion of the lot. This is kind of a concept plan that they had submitted for their particular annexation. Their proposed Phase One is that proposed multifamily uses within the south-center portion of the lot.
Jason, thank you. Second reading, folks, anybody want to engage the council? Counselors?
Move for approval, Anderson.
Second, Kylie.
Yeah, thank you. Counselors, appreciate that. No discussion, and it should be noted, Counselor Staggers did recuse himself. A rook of vote, please.
Councilmembers Rolfing?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Urbanback?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
That has passed six to zero. Item forty-one?
Item forty-one is a second reading, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property at thirty-five oh-five South Caffey Avenue, from the C-two Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District to the O Office District, petition number twenty-one seventy-six, twenty fifteen, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval.
The applicant here is Paul Reynolds. The owner is Josh Bauer. It's roughly point four-one acres, and there's an existing dental clinic on it. They are proposing to rezonate from commercial to office and then construct a couple of additions and additional parking spaces onto the building. And this zoning district is more indicative of what the actual use of the property currently is.
Jason, thank you. Anybody want to engage the council? Thank you, audience. Counselors?
Move to approve, Urbanback.
Second, Kylie.
Counselor Buck, thank you. Counselor Kylie, thank you as well. A rook of vote, please.
Councilmembers Rolfing?
Yes.
Staggers?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Urbanback?
Yes.
Jamison?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
That has passed eight to zero. Item forty-two?
Item forty-two is a second reading, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property south of East Twenty-Sixth Street and west of South Schaefer Avenue, from the C-two Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District to the O Office District, petition number twenty-one eighty, twenty fifteen, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Excuse me. The applicant and owner of this parcel is Steve Van Buskirk. It is roughly one point two acres, and they are looking at rezoning this out of the commercial district and going to the office to construct two lots, a one building on each lot, similar to the existing building that you can see here to the east on the aerial.
Jason, thank you. Anybody in the audience want to engage the council on this topic? Counselors?
Move approval, Rolfing.
Second, Erickson.
Counselor Rolfing, Counselor Erickson, thank you so much for that. A rook of vote, please.
Councilmembers Rolfing?
Yes.
Staggers?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Urbanback?
Yes.
Jamison?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
That has passed eight to zero. Thank you. Item 43?
Item 43 is a first reading to set a data hearing in second reading for Tuesday, March 10th, 2015, at 7:00 PM. First reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, declaring certain property of the city of Sioux Falls surplus and approving an offer by AR Properties LLC to purchase real property from the city of Sioux Falls.
Hi, good evening. I'm Brent O'Neill with the Economic Development Division, here to talk about a city-owned property that we're proposing to sell for redevelopment. These maps should look familiar from a previous presentation we gave a couple of weeks ago. The properties in the northern part of our downtown, the map to the left shows Block 4, Phillips to the Falls addition. It's right where Phillips Avenue makes its curve into the Falls Park area. Just a quick background on the property. It's one that has been a railroad, ironically, for several decades. The last 10 years or so, it's been owned by the city. City purchased it for $4 a foot. The purpose was to remove those obsolete rail lines that were in that area, and I'll show a photo of that in a moment. The big impetus was to extend Phillips Avenue to Falls Park from the downtown core, and then there were four remaining tracts of property that would be able to be sold for development projects. Real quickly, there's on the left a picture from 2004 showing the railroad. To the right, 2012 with the road in and grass planted in that area. And then here's the site we're looking at today, just a street view of what we're looking at. This property was the subject of a request for proposals the city's issued about two years ago. Had several goals, but four that I'm going to call out here. One was to sell that property for a redevelopment project to an entity that could take on a project like that. Two, select a project that was compatible with the entrance, the gateway into Falls Park, as well as conducive to the downtown environment. Third, seek a proposal that would benefit, the tax base would increase the assessed value of the property. And fourth, receive a fair value for that property. We are, actually, if I could go back one second, on that fair price component, we were looking, again, I said we acquired it for $4 a foot. We were projecting $6 to $8 per foot when we issued the RFP. We received an appraisal that showed it as high as 11. We also had a broker's opinion that suggested $5 to $7 per foot. Our recommendation is selling it to AR Properties for $7 a foot of that amount, to $195,000 on roughly three-quarters of an acre. John Brown, you may know him, he's with Stockwell Engineers, would be the principal on this project. He'd build a 10,000-foot office building that you can see in the drawing there, construct that beginning this spring, and then Stockwell Engineers would be the first user of this facility. As I wrap up, just a few final conversations. When we look at second reading next week, we're also going to have engineering here to look at kind of an obsolete piece of right-of-way, a remnant from that older map you saw to vacate that right-of-way. We will need to relocate that sculpture that's on the corner there to a new location. A couple of things that I think you guys need to know. One, this program or this project does qualify for the downtown tax reduction program. The city will be cooperating with adjacent property owners on some utility relocations that need to occur in the area. We've been asked by adjacent property owners, including the buyer of this property, to look at construction of Second Avenue in that area. It's kind of an older, a bit dilapidated road, so modernizing that. And then I think the final point I'd like to emphasize, again, our focus on selling this for development. There is a clause in here that if the development does not occur, that the city can reacquire that property dollar for dollar and do what it wishes with from that point forward. Happy to answer any questions.
Brent, thank you, counsel. Counselor Staggers?
Yes. Brent, you mentioned that we could get it back. After how many years? How many years, in other words, do they have to develop it? They have to develop it?
They, it is, and I could get you the exact number of days, but I mean, it's not years. It's a year or-
Oh, really?
Yeah. They have to commence construction within the year.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Counsel, yes, Counselor Karski?
Move to set the date of second hearing or second reading for Tuesday, March 10th.
Second, Erickson.
Thank you. There's been a motion to set a data hearing, second reading for Tuesday, March 10th for this item. A rook of a vote, please.
Council members Rolfing?
Yes.
Staggers?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Urbanback?
Yes.
Jamison?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
That has passed eight to zero. Item 44?
Item 44 is to set a data hearing in second reading for Tuesday, March 17th, 2015, at 7:00 PM for first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by revising Chapter 111, alcoholic beverages.
Good evening. Jamie Palmer with Licensing. Item 44 is a proposal to increase fees for the special one-day retail malt beverage licenses to $25 per day and the special one-day wine licenses to $25 per day. Sioux Falls currently charges $5 for each of these types of licenses, which is much lower when compared to other municipalities, as well as Minnehaha County. If this proposal were to pass, it would still be half as much what the other smaller municipalities are charging at this time. The number of special one-day requests have significantly increased over the last five years. In 2009, 47 special licenses were issued, and in 2014, 107 were issued. It is important to note that the, in the past, applicants for these types of licenses were primarily nonprofit organizations, but in the last couple of years, primarily the last five years, it has, they have been coming from current license holders. And processing these requests can take approximately two hours, and often they're coming after the agenda deadline, which creates additional work and time to do work that's already been done. And according to the previous licensing specialist, Lori Hogstedt, these fees have remained unchanged since 1985. South Dakota Codified Law 354-125, in short, gives the governing body the authority to set these fees. I appreciate your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Jamie, thank you. Counselor Staggers?
Jamie, you mentioned that the county charges more. How much do they charge?
They charge $25 per day.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Jamison?
I agree with the increase in the fee. I think it's probably only appropriate. But Jamie, when you did some of your research on those other municipalities, did you find that all of them have the special one-day permits approved by the city council, or some of them just administratively done, as long as they meet their deadline or some other criteria? Or do you have any knowledge you can share with us?
I believe that they all have to be, it's by state law that they have to be approved by the governing body. Now, I don't know, some of them can put them on the consent agenda. You know, they have a little bit of flexibility as to how they want to get that done, but essentially, they all have to be done. That's set by state law.
All right, thanks.
Counselor Anderson?
Move to set the date of hearing and second reading for Tuesday, March 17th, 2015.
Second, Erickson.
Thank you both. Appreciate that. Has been a motion to set the date of hearing. A rook of a vote, please.
Council members Rolfing?
Yes.
Staggers?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Urbanback?
Yes.
Jamison?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
That has passed eight to zero. Thank you. Item 45?
Item 45 is a resolution including certain contiguous territory within the corporate limits of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, Annexation 2053-2014 Slavic Church.
Jason Bieber, Planning and Building Services. This is an application by John Engelhardt. The owners of this property are the First Slavic Church. It is roughly 9.24 acres. It is located within Tier 1 of our future growth area. The purpose of this particular annexation is to construct a church with some associated recreation, thanks to the South. They will have access to South Six Mile Road, and water and sewer will be extended from the South at the cost of the developer.
Thank you. Jase, appreciate it. Anybody want to speak to this item? Counsel?
Mayor, if I could-
Please. Counselor Jamison?
Jason, could you go back to that map that had the, there you go. Tell me what I'm seeing there. I'm just, the blue is-
The blue is our Tier 1 for our growth area with our annexation. We kind of did our growth area in certain tiers. Tier 1 means that it's ready for annexation. Utilities are available, and so it's supported to annex.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Counselor Jamison, would you like a motion to approve this item?
Yes, I love annexing-
And I will second this. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you both.